Good morning, everyone. I'm gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order this morning with the Pledge of Allegiance.
................................................
Welcome you all here. As Commissioner Heiburger said, this is the warmest morning of the week, so welcome to the balmy Tuesday morning. I'd like to remind everyone to silence their cellphones. We have meeting documents that are available for your review down next to Commissioner Heiburger. And Craig and Carol are here if you need a listening device. So first item would be to consider a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next item is to approve the commission meeting minutes from January 29, 2019. Motion and second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next item is bills to be paid in the amount of $348,383.57.
Pay the bills?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any comments this morning? Kind of a record low for the last few weeks, so we have motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next item is the Safety Committee 2018 Annual Report is there for your review. There's lots of good information in that report, so I recommend that for your review. Next item is Personnel Actions. First item would be consider a motion to approve the routine personnel actions.
Move for approval?
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. And then we have Carol Muller here giving the report. I understand Carrie Devers is away today.
Thank you. I'm the Carol Muller, Commission Office. I'm the pinch hitter for this. Yes, the one thing we would like to do today is recognize the following employees for their years of service as of this past February. We have Carolyn Johnson, who's a museum aide in the museum. Maggie Gary, who's a human resource generalist. Matt Thule is a correctional officer. Jason Torring, computer supporter, computer support tech. And Robin Ketchum, senior records technician. I know at least we have at least one of them present.
Robin's here. Robin? You want to at least stand up?
Twenty-five years for Robin.
Thank you so much. That's incredible service. We really appreciate that.
And then we'll just highlight that there are 285 volunteers that are listed on your list that you see each month for the work that they do. Everything from people who help out at the museum, to people who are divers, to people who do all kinds of different things for us. Very few offices are not touched in some way by volunteers.
It's always a very humbling list of people who are willing to give their time, so thank you very much. It takes us to item six, abatements recommended for approval. There are none this week. Next item is notices and requests. There's the request to authorize the auditor to publish notice to bidders for construction of the Minnehaha County Campus Parking Lot J construction. Mark Krins.
Good morning, Commission. Mark Krins, Director of Facilities. Last year, the county purchased the lots at 519 North Minnesota Avenue for parking lot improvements. I've entered into an agreement with Serra Associates to do the design work and draft the bid documents. We sent those to the state's attorney. They've reviewed and approved them, so I'm looking for commission approval to authorize the auditor's office to post notice to bidders for the construction of Parking Lot J. Are there any questions?
Any questions for Mark?
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other comments? If not, roll call vote.
Barth?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Karski?
Yes.
Bender?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Next item is planning and zoning notices. This is to authorize the auditor to publish notice of a public hearing on February 26 at 5:00 PM at a joint meeting of the Sioux Falls Council and Minnehaha County Commission to amend the 2002 revised zoning ordinances for Minnehaha County and the City of Sioux Falls. Scott Anderson.
Thank you. Scott Anderson, County Planning Director. And today, I'm bringing forth a request for you to authorize the auditor to publish a hearing notice on a rezoning hearing that will be held before our joint City of Sioux Falls County Commission meeting, which will be held on February 26 at 5:00 PM at Carnegie Town Hall. This is a rezoning request to rezone approximately 30 and a half acres from A1 agriculture to a planned development. The planned development will have basically two components. The largest component of approximately 24 acres will be left in an ag, an agricultural use. The balance of it will be allow, will be a events facility, wedding barn type of a use. And this is up off at, on Slip Up Creek Road approximately three-fourths of a mile east of the intersection of Slip Up Creek Road and Jim's Weep Highway. I'm not sure what the number is, but this was to the planning commission a week ago Monday, and they recommended approval with some conditions. They, there were a lot of people at the meeting, and I'm sure that we'll have a lot of public participation at that meeting on February 26. I have prepared the hearing notice, the ordinance, the summary, the minutes. Those are all, have been provided to you and to Olivia at the auditor's office for her to publish, or prepare to publish the notice should you decide to move forward today. I'd be glad to answer any questions you have.
Questions for Scott? Just as a point of clarification, Scott, my understanding is they voted to approve part of it and not approve part of it. Is that correct?
That's correct. Initially, the applicant had requested three sub-areas. He had proposed also like a seven-acre area to be, to include sort of a residential component of seven lots. And I think, well, I know that now he has come to the realization that at this point, it doesn't really fit into the overall plan for what the city has and also for what the county feels is appropriate for that area. I think the applicant is now comfortable with moving forward with just the two sub-areas. But initially, it was three sub-areas.
Any questions for Scott?
I would just point out that on the one map, Subarea C was the area that he was looking for on the right. That was going to be residential, and that was not approved to be residential. It's on the other side of the creek there, which is difficult to get to. So Subarea A is where the wedding barn would be at, and Subarea B is going to be zoned, continue to be zoned ag. But it's all within the same planned development, so it is a, all three of those areas are the property involved, right?
And I hesitate to call this a wedding barn, although I think in our mind, that's where we go. I would call it an events facility because for the public also to be aware, this is going to be constructed, or proposed to be constructed, generally straight south of our proposed veteran cemetery. So I think it will, you know, the intent is that the applicant will also utilize it
Thank you. Takes us to the next item. Item nine, petition for a compromise of lean.
for family services.
There is none, so that takes us to opportunity for public comment.
So it's going to be more than just a wedding barn. I would call it an events facility, and which, you know, potentially will work well with
Is there anyone here this morning that would like to speak on anything that is not on our agenda? No rush to the podium, so we'll move on to regular business.
the veteran cemetery because they don't typically like to have long ceremonies there.
Item 10 is a briefing on the Helpline Center, and we have Janet Kittens here this morning.
They're sort of in and out.
Thank you for coming.
So if a family did want to have like a family service or a longer ceremony, or whatever,
Sure. Good morning, everybody. I would like to take this opportunity to just give you some updated information about the Helpline Center, the trends that we've seen over the past year.
you know, meet and greet, or whatever, they could potentially host it at this if that's,
So I know I have a PowerPoint, and I think everybody is familiar with the Helpline Center,
you know, if they work out in agreement with the property owner.
so I will move on from the first slide.
So I think it's going to be like a multi-use facility, but...
We've been around, obviously, since 1974.
Funeral barn sounds less festive.
Three core services, 211, suicide crisis support, and our volunteer connections.
Well, it's, there's, it is, there will be other uses besides just a wedding barn,
So just overall highlights of the past year. What we have been seeing through our calls on 211 include that people are reaching out
although I think all of our wedding barns, if you think about them, host a lot more events
to us in alternative ways, so that's great.
than just weddings, but...
Any other questions for Scott?
We have email and texting and our online resource database available, and we've had
If not, it entertain a motion.
more people reach out through that way.
Motion to authorize publication of notice?
Mental health and addictions continue to be a significant portion of the phone calls
Second.
Motion and a second.
that we do handle.
Roll call vote, please.
Twenty-two percent of our identified needs were mental health and addictions.
Benega?
Aye.
Heiburger?
Aye.
And then our suicide contacts have increased again this past year.
Karski?
So I'll delve into a little bit more of the details on the next slide. We break down the data statewide. We had over just 46,000 contacts, but here in Minnehaha County was just under 25,000, 24,287. Still, the vast majority of people reach us through the phone. You can see that, but people are reaching us through email and texting and obviously coming into our office. I will point out that our online database searches have increased tremendously over the past year. So we have always had our database online for a long time, but we have made a concerted effort in this past year to reach out and teach people how to use that online database, especially social service professionals. And so I think that we've seen an increase in people accessing the resource information that way. And then as far as the categories of the contacts that we've had, we've seen an increase in what I would consider our listening and support phone calls. More people just kind of needing that time to talk about the troubles in their life in addition to getting resources. So a decrease in our referral and information calls, where people are calling just strictly for specific information, but more just needing to talk or in crisis kinds of situations. And then the next slide talks about our identified need categories. Obviously, all of our contacts can have more than one need, but they generally have a primary need. And you'll notice, as I led with, that mental health and addictions are one of the largest, is the largest category of need that we see through our contacts. Underneath that, you'll notice individual family and community support, which is kind of a broad category, but most commonly what's included in there includes holiday assistance. So we receive a lot of contacts for like Thanksgiving food baskets, holiday assistance during Christmas time, and so that falls into that category. But then housing and information, healthcare, all kind of fall down on the list, but all categories that we would expect to see through the 211 helpline. The next slide talks about our suicide contacts, and we've seen a 12% increase in those from 2017 to 2018. And I always tell people that that is not a bad thing, because that means more people are reaching out when they need help. So I always see that as a sign of encouragement, that more people recognize the phone number to contact us and reach out, whether it's themselves that are in crisis or their family members. And so the bar chart talks about the different levels of those suicide calls that we have. Most of their calls are Level 1, where there's an identified suicidal ideation. Level 2, there's some type of plan that has been shared with us. Level 3 is that they're at imminent risk. They put the plan into action. The third-party calls are from family and friends who are concerned about a loved one. So you can kind of see that in most categories, that over the past year, we've seen an increase in people reaching out for assistance for those suicide-related issues with us. The next slide is our crisis outcomes, and over the past year, we have changed a little bit on how we track things, because we wanted to be able to report information like this back to you. So with our suicide calls, we track an outcome. What happens with that call? And so in the vast majority of cases, 75% to 80% of the time, we do not have to utilize law enforcement, whether that's the sheriff's department or the Sioux Falls Police Department in our area, to access support for those individuals. We're able to, my staff are able to talk with that person, de-escalate their crisis, create a safety plan for them, and then we continue to do follow-up calls with them to make sure that they're safe, and thus not involving law enforcement, which is also, it takes a burden off them that we're able to kind of take care of that. There are those majority, or those minority of the times where we do have to involve law enforcement for a well-person check, but that's only 20% of the time. And then I wanted to just update you on our newest program, the Network of Care. We are just entering our third year of service with the Network of Care. And so just quickly, that's a collaborative of social service agencies working together using a shared software platform to share information about the clients that we all serve in common. And so there's a common intake form that that client fills out when they enter the Network of Care through any of those partner agencies, and that information is then shared with all of the other partner agencies, and you can do referrals within the system. We have seen a great success over the past two years with the growth of the program. We started with just five pilot agencies, and now we're up to 15 partner agencies, and we will add more in 2019. We already have several on the planning agenda to join. So we're excited about that, and just the next slide, we'll share a little bit more about some of the data that we've seen with that. We've had over 16,000 clients enrolled in the Network of Care, and 11,000 of those, or just over 11,000 were unique clients in 2018. So we're certainly serving a lot of people through those partner agencies, and a lot of them are unique individuals. Fifty-two thousand services and shelter stays, so individuals are accessing a variety of services and programs through those partner agencies. In fact, there's 43 different ones that we have documented. And we've made over just 1,200 referrals within the system, which is done very seamlessly. It's all done electronically, and oftentimes, there are forms that have to be completed, such as with Furniture Mission. There's an application process that is all done electronically and then sent over to Furniture Mission, so it's very much improved their productivity from those partner agencies. So we're pleased with that. So I kind of want to talk about what the next steps are, where we see the Network of Care going. As I've mentioned, we've been very pleased with the growth of that, with the addition of the agencies. And now what's happening is the partner agencies are coming to us. They have heard about the Network of Care. They've seen how it can benefit the other partner agencies and the client, and they want to now join and become a part of that. So we're excited about that. But we also wanted to look at and delve a little bit deeper into the data that we have collected for the past two years. That was one of our hopes when we created the Network of Care, that we'd have a centralized place to kind of look at the data of the individuals that need help in our community and kind of look at what's happening to them within the system, and how can we move them to a more sustainable place without accessing services. So the Helpline Center, through our Bush Foundation grant, has been able to hire Augustana Research. And so we have just given her two years' worth of data from our system to analyze and plow through and look at that. So we're anxiously awaiting a report that they will give back to us probably in March sometime, and we'll kind of look through that and then have a public report that we will share with the community, probably in April, looking at what the Network of Care has done for the community from a client perspective, from a community perspective, and from an agency perspective, and how the, what the benefits have been. And then the next thing that we're doing that I'm very excited about is that we wanted a better way to track an individual client and what they're, how they move through the system to become more sustainable and more productive and just in a better place. And so a lot of the healthcare systems across the country have moved to a system where they're looking at social determinants of health, because they quickly identified that for a person to stay healthy, it's not just that they need to take their medication, that they need to follow what the doctor has said. It's all about the social environment that they're living in that really makes an impact on how healthy they are. So we took that concept and we tweaked it just a little bit, because we wanted to track how people in our social network of care, how they were rated on that system over periods of time. And so in fact, today is the first day that we are going to start piloting a social determinants of health survey. The survey will be given to all of our clients eventually that are in the Network of Care, and it's a self-survey. It is not administered by the caseworkers or the social workers, because we wanted it to be time-effective, and we know that our social service staff have limited time. So when a client is enrolled into the Network of Care, they are actually given a tablet, and there are 15 questions that they rate themselves on. Everything from healthcare questions to housing, to mental healthcare questions. And then it also talks about, you know, just some general safety issues, too. And so depending upon how they answer those questions, it's a rating system, and there's a score that's developed from that. And so over a period of time, you can see how that score changes and a trend analysis of where they're moving on those different social determinants of health. So our goal is that we will see people improve their score on those social determinants of health as they move through the Network of Care. But also, a big piece of that is the Helpline Center and 211. We wanted to play a bigger role in helping people access the services that they need. So there are trigger questions on those social determinants of health questions. As an example, there's a PHQ2, which is a depression screen, questions that are very common in the healthcare system. Those questions are asked of our clients, and if they score a certain level, it triggers our staff to be notified, and we reach out to that client to make sure they're accessing mental healthcare services, or how we can get them referred into getting that mental healthcare service on a more timely and quicker way than what they're accessing it now. So hopefully, we can kind of catch some of those issues early on and get them into the services that they need to support them and get them to the point where they're doing better in their lives. So hopefully, at this time next year, I can come back and report to you more data on that, on how we see our clients moving through the system. So that's kind of just a brief summary of what's been going on with the Helpline Center, but I'm certainly open to any questions that you have.
Commissioner Barth?
Thanks for coming today. So have you seen a spike in issues with external events going on, let's say, like the opioid crisis or the federal government shutdown? And when those things happen, if there is a spike, do you also get more resources coming forward to people say, "I want to help with opioid overdoses" or something? Do these external things cause a spike?
They do. Probably the most recent has been the federal shutdown, that we did see an increase in contacts or calls to the Helpline Center. And we recreated kind of a resource database that was through our website, that people could access those services, whether those were kind of one-time services that were created because of the federal shutdown, or they were ongoing services that sometimes people needed to access for the first time, because they were without a paycheck. The opioid crisis, the Helpline Center is part of the statewide effort to respond to the opioid crisis in South Dakota, so we actually answer an opioid crisis line that's different than the 211 phone number, and we also provide an opioid care coordinator who works with individuals or family members to support them as they go through, hopefully, seeking treatment and going through that recovery process.
Commissioner Heiburger?
Thanks, Janet, for coming. A couple of years ago, I was with you when you testified in PIER about funding statewide for 211, and now I see there's a bill again coming forward with state funding for 211. If that passes, will it affect your organization at all, or is it more for the rest of the state who doesn't have 211 services? And maybe it's not a question you can answer at this point.
Sure. Yes, there is a bill at the legislature, Senate Bill 8, that is currently being heard. And there's two versions, so to speak. There's funding, if it were to be passed, that would include just covering the rest of the counties that currently don't have access to 211. And then there's a version that would pay for the entire cost of 211 statewide. So certainly, there would be impacts either way if either one of those passed and how we provided our services. We certainly would expand to include the rest of the state with either version, but if the version passed where it would cover all of the costs of 211, then our costs to our local partners that are currently supporting 211 would decrease.
Commissioner Heiburger?
Just a digital comment. NACO, National Association of Counties, the president from last year, his initiative to educate the United States was on 211, and talked a lot about the importance of what 211 had done to California, because that's where he's from, during the fires and some of the disasters they've had, because they said they had no way to, for people to reach out, other than to call 911. And because of 211, they were able to provide services to people in a better way than people all calling 911 in the multitude of floods and fires and stuff that they've had in the last three years. And so California and the National Association of Counties has been a big proponent of getting 211 to go state and national, because the services can be provided. So thanks, Janet.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? It's a great presentation. Thank you so much for coming to view with us this morning. So that takes us to item 11, which is a briefing on the Minnehaha County Suland Heritage Museum System. Bill Hoskins.
Good morning, Commissioners. Bill Hoskins, Director of the Suland Heritage Museums. Well, I'm here today to tell you a little bit about a very challenging year, 2018. We had a number of major accomplishments, some of which you're very aware of. One was the opening of the Irene Hall Museum Resource Center. That ribbon cutting for that building was November 8. It was completed a few weeks ahead of schedule, and through everybody's work, I think we came in under budget. Once we had possession of the building in August, we began moving artifacts representing the collection. During the course of the year, we moved 82,000 artifacts, about 73% of the collection. We also relocated, bought new, built over 600 shelving units. And one of our big goals has been realized, a public workspace where the public can utilize the collection onsite. We operate two other historic buildings, the Old Courthouse and the Pettigrew. Both are 130 years old, and we got quite a bit done in those buildings as well. At the Old Courthouse, the, through the building fund, a rubber roof on the west side of the Old Courthouse Museum was replaced. That stopped a lot of leakage inside the structure. We also began a project of replacing some of the light fixtures in the exhibit galleries. That was funded through the Museum Enterprise Fund, but that lighting system is not only a benefit from energy savings, it's partially motion-activated LED system, but it also helps our environment for the artifacts, reducing the UV light exposure, and that's turned out to work very well. We'll be continuing with some of that work this year. We also had a major roofing project at the Pettigrew. That substantial completion was in June, June 14. The punch list items are still to be completed. That's under the supervision of the City Engineers' Office. We have a program space at the Pettigrew, bought new chairs for those, for the comfort of our visitors. Visitation was actually down last year at 77,63. We were open to the public over 5,300 hours. Busiest days of the week, and this varies a little bit, but last year, Friday, Saturday, Thursday, in that order. Busiest months of the year, May, March, August, and October. May was a record month. We actually had over 12,000 people served and beat the previous record by over 2,000 people. Visitors came from all 50 states, 30 foreign countries. The top states are no surprise, Minnesota, Iowa, Nebraska, but also California, Illinois, and Texas, and they're consistently in the top 10 for visitation at the museums. We also had a major roofing project at the Pettigrew. That substantial completion was in June, June 14th. The punch list items are still to be completed. That's under the supervision of the City Engineers Office. We have a program space at the Pettigrew, bought new chairs for those, for the comfort of our visitors. Visitation was actually down last year at seventy-seven thousand, six, sixty-three. We were open to the public over fifty-three hundred hours. Busiest days of the week, and this varies a little bit, but last year, Friday, Saturday, Thursday, in that order. Busiest months of the year, May, March, August, and October. May was a record month. We actually had over twelve thousand people served and beat the previous record by over two thousand people. Visitors came from all fifty states, thirty foreign countries. The top states are no surprise, Minnesota, Iowa, Nebraska, but also California, Illinois, and Texas, and they're consistently in the top ten for visitation at the museums. One of the big reasons for the Museum Resource Center is the care of the museum collection. We have a hundred and eleven thousand catalogued items on our database. They range greatly in size. About ten thousand objects are viewable online through that database connection. About three thousand are on exhibition in a given year. Last year, we had only twenty-four donors, gave about five hundred and thirteen objects to the museum. We actually had a moratorium on donations from June 30th to December 31st of last year. While we're moving, we didn't want things to be confused or lost in the course of the move. We are an educational facility and staff presented six hundred thirty-two programs on and off-site to over forty-five thousand people last year. That included fifty-four K-12 schools, thirty-two different daycares and other groups. We have discovery packs, which are a pack a teacher can check out, take candle making into the classroom and has instructions, things like that. We actually have twenty-five different discovery packs, but they were used by over ten thousand people last year. We have exhibits at both the Old Courthouse and Pettigrew. Six different gallery spaces at the courthouse, three at the Pettigrew. We produced four new exhibitions last year for that. Typically, we design our exhibits to be up for eighteen to twenty-four months and are trying to open a new exhibition each quarter of the year, keep things rotated. Some of the things we have planned next year, a number of things coming down the road. We have an exhibit on motorcycles that we're hoping to open in June at the Old Courthouse. We have an exhibit celebrating the hundredth anniversary of the municipal bands. That's going to open up on the third floor at the courthouse in April. And we also both produce some exhibits for outside. In this slide, the photo on the right is an exhibit that we produced under contract for the city of Deadwood. And they provided us the script and the photos. Our staff designed them, did production, and for that, we were paid five thousand dollars under contract. We also, every year, host the Northern Plains Tribal Art Show. That is a, really a two-day operation in the courtroom. We set up temporary exhibit walls, lighting, artists bring in artwork from all over the United States, tribal artwork. It's a judge-juried show. The winners get the exhibit set up on Friday for a Friday evening exhibition. Rentals are part of our operation. Last year, we had seventy-seven rentals. That's down a little. The rental business ebbs and flows, really depends on market. Lately, there are a number of new wedding barns or facilities and that impacts our business as well. But I think really our niche is people who are looking for a unique experience in a unique place to have their experience. Weddings and receptions make up the bulk of our rentals and those months, the busiest months last year were November, December, February, September. Staff worked an additional five hundred and twenty-one hours. Those rental hours or overtime hours are reimbursed to the operations budget from the Enterprise Fund. Last year was a year we had some great donations, a number of them in kind. We got a bunch of library shelving from the Siouxland Libraries. The Siouxland Heritage Museums Alliance purchased some new shelving for the firearms collection, for storing silver artifacts. We continue to work with a number of businesses. Concrete Materials, for instance, provides buses for our tours of Into the Pit and so on. And some of the things coming down the road, a lot coming down the road. We continue to expand our programming and reassess our programs that we have. We have a number of new exhibitions planning. We have to complete the move of the museum's collection, which will take some time at this point. And with two hundred and thirty-year-old buildings, every day is an adventure, so you never know what's coming, but we're continuing to work at the Old Courthouse on the lighting systems. Tuck pointing through the building fund never seems to end. Questions? I'm sure there are many.
Commissioner Barth?
Bill, talk about the financial contributions that you've received for shelving, et cetera. I know you had a DAR gift of some thousands of dollars for shelving.
In 2018, we received a DAR grant for approximately fifteen thousand dollars to buy about thirty new shelving units, open steel shelving units. The Museums Alliance, which is a 501(c)(3) friends group, received a donation of fifty thousand dollars for shelving. That also happened. The library shelving, my understanding was, it was being replaced and they offered it to us in kind, but that values about thirty thousand dollars of that shelving.
I'm trying to just make another comment that on pretty darn short notice, Bill and his staff were able to respond with a retirement gift for Chief Leroy Koopman, the longtime fire chief in Colton, and I know he really appreciated it and so do I.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Karski?
I often wondered, Bill, you know, the donations of items that you get, you know, great grandma's wedding dress, grandpa's John Deere tractor collection, how do you decide what you take and what you don't?
Well, excellent question. Sometimes I wonder, but we actually have a collecting plan that was adopted by the museum board, developed by the staff and a number of years ago, that looked at some of the weaknesses and strengths of the museum's collection. We don't probably need any more nineteen-twenty stoves, but it looks, for instance, and our photographic collection's a good example. We've got a lot of excellent images of Sioux Falls in the eighteen nineties to about nineteen-hundred. Are we looking for other excellent photos? Yes, but that's not a priority. Where we're lacking is photos of Sioux Falls and the surrounding communities in the county in the nineteen fifties through the nineteen seventies. And those are photographs we're really actively looking for in terms of our photographic collection. What we're really looking for are the things that have great stories. So it's not necessarily the super rare US Model 1870 Springfield carbine that two hundred and fifty of them were made, and we have one, by the way. But the story behind it, and the story behind it, we actually have a photograph of the man who owned it and it was used in a murder. And we have a picture of the trial jury and the newspaper articles and the story that goes behind it makes that artifact priceless. And so when we're really looking for the ideal artifacts that we want in our collection, we want the things that have a story, that help tell the story of our community and we can document. So we want a picture of Dean Karski using, you know, wearing that tie once you donate your tie collection to the museum or something. And we want, we want to know the story about, oh, Dean was wearing this the day he signed this important document or something. So we're always looking for the story.
Are there other questions for Bill? Bill, I did notice that, you know, attendance was down, you know, fairly, I mean, it was a definite aberration in historical numbers and I just was curious if you have thoughts about that or?
Well, it was a very challenging year for us. We had some staffing challenges through the course of the year. One of our people who does a lot of programming was gone on family leave for the first six weeks of the year. We had another programming staff who was gone on family leave at the end of the year. Those really impact because I'm one of the backups if things fall through. There was so much going on, on staff. We had some real staffing challenges in the year that had an impact, definite impact on our programming numbers. Some things, you never know, the ebb and flow, and I try to look at things quarterly more than month-to-month because April was a horrible month. Last year, you remember, we had blizzards that canceled a number of our bigger programs in that month. And yet, May, a lot of things rescheduled. May was a huge month and a rebound. In the final analysis, I don't, I don't have a really good answer on why people didn't come in the doors or they did.
Yeah, so do you have any reason to anticipate that that's an ongoing trend or do you anticipate that that will probably turn around this year?
Well, we've been facing a number of trends. One, if you look back over many years, school groups are not going on as many bus field trips as they used to. The field trips that do happen are often cars. Doesn't mean we don't get buses of school kids, but one of the things we've been doing for a number of years now is we've taken some of the money from the endowment and set up what we call bus scholarships, where school groups who want to come to a program but may not have that field trip in the school budget essentially can apply and we end up paying for the bus through endowment monies that were set aside for that purpose. And that has helped. It isn't always taken advantage of. I think four times last year, there's a little paperwork involved. But that's been one of the challenges is the school groups and it's a different emphasis. To combat that, over the years, we've been stepping up, going out into the schools more and so our outreach programming numbers have been going up, with the exception of last year, but that was staffing challenges.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you very much for that presentation. I think you are on tap for the next couple of items as well.
Yep.
So the next item is item 12, Consider a Motion to Authorize a $10,000 Inner Fund Transfer from the Museum Store Fund to the Museum Special Enterprise Fund.
Yes Commissioners. We have two revenue funds. One is the Museum Store and it is set up to account for revenues and expenses associated with operating the museum store. And the museum store pretty consistently makes a little money. We've operated it in black consistently for probably a decade. And what we, the Museum Enterprise Fund is what we're operating all of our educational programming through. And this is taking some money, ten thousand dollars from the store, that the store has made for us and moving it over into the Enterprise Fund to support our educational programming and the marketing or promotion of those programs. And this was part of the 2019 budget that went through the budget process.
Any questions for Bill?
Approval.
Second. Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Oh, sorry, roll call vote.
Aye.
Karski?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Takes us to item 13, Consider a Motion to Authorize the Reappointment of Timothy Shindel to the Museum Board for a three-year term.
The museum board consists of eleven people, five appointed by the county, including Commissioner Barth, and five appointed by the city and the president of the Museums Alliance. Timothy is a county appointment. He has served out a, two years of a three-year term from a man named Del Crone and he's eligible for reappointment. Tim's a good board member. He comes to board meetings and participates and has a really good handle on finances. He's, I think, does contract enforcement for Orion Foods, anyway.
Any questions?
Motion to approve.
Motion in a second, roll call vote, please.
Karski?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Hybarger?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye. Thank you. Motion passes unanimously. And your last item, item 14, is to authorize the appointment of Nikki Gronley to the museum board.
Yeah. I was very happy to get the application of Nikki Gronley for posting on the museum board. It would be a three-year term. She has a lot of experience in the cyber world, I guess, cybersecurity, and I'm really excited about having that aspect on the museum board.
Any questions?
Make a motion to approve.
Second. The motion in a second, roll call vote, please.
Barth?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Hybarger?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye.
Barth? Or Bender?
Aye. It's like he gets two votes. Well, congratulations to Nikki. I know she's here today. Thank you so much for being here and thank you to Timothy as well. There's so many opportunities to serve in capacities like this and we really appreciate people who are willing to step up and give their time to important organizations like the museum. So, thank you.
One last word. Anybody wants a tour of the Resource Center? I can set it up anytime.
Okay, I know we had to cancel our tour because of the weather last time, so thank you. Okay, DJ Wright in the nick of time. Item 15 is authorize the chair to sign the Construction Administration Agreement between Minnehaha County and Banner Associates.
Morning Commissioners, DJ Boothie, Highway Superintendent. We led this project on January 8th. It's the culvert replacement project. I think we have ten culverts that we were replacing with the project and Banner Associates completed the design of the project and we would like them to assist with the Construction Administration. They provided a proposal and we've gone through that. It's one million, seven, eight thousand dollars for the construction project, one hundred and thirty-five thousand, three hundred dollars for the, for the Construction Administration Agreement. So available for any questions. Otherwise, I would ask your approval to move forward with this Construction Admin Agreement.
Any questions for DJ?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion in a couple of seconds, I think. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. The next item is item 16, Consider a Motion to Approve the Purchase of Five Different Land Parcels. DJ Boothie.
Commissioners, with this agreement, I think there was maybe a misunderstanding of the briefing memo or something. There's five individual landowners and so there are six right-of-way parcels or six landowners, or five landowners, six parcels. Of the six parcels- Of the six parcels, there are six right-of-way purchase documents. And then there are also two drainage, permanent drainage easement documents. And so each one of these has been prepared for the 146 reconstruction project. We've talked about that several different times. It's a reconstruction project that we're probably going to end up starting in 2020, from South Dakota Highway 11 to the Minnesota border. And so we received the approved documents from the State Attorney's Office a couple of weeks ago, or a few weeks ago. And we've been meeting with landowners ever since. And this is kind of the next batch of documents we've had agreements upon. So asking for your approval of these, and I can stand by for any questions.
Any questions for DJ? Commissioner Barth.
So DJ, typically, what kind of size parcels are these?
They're mostly, I think all of them are less than one acre. They're small linear acreages or small linear parcels that would be typically 17 feet from the statutory right-of-way mark, which is 33 feet from the section line. Will go another 17 feet to add up to a full 50-foot from the section line, which would give us the 100-foot right-of-way swath.
So are they, pardon me, are they like rectangular or are they?
Yep, 17 feet by anywhere from 30 feet, 40 feet, a couple hundred feet long. Yep, they're short.
Questions?
Short and narrow.
We have a motion in a second. Any other comments? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Takes us to item 17. Authorize the chair to sign an agreement to place railroad crossing improvements on Highway 110. DJ.
Commissioners, this is another one of the railroad agreements that we signed with the state. They have a program where we enter into an agreement with the state, and the state enters into an agreement with the railroad entity. And the railroad performs a construction project to replace the track crossing over our county highway. And then it's a 90-10 program, and so the state pays 90% of the costs to the railroad to complete that project. We pay 10% of the cost. Typically, we receive credit for work that we do in repairing the road after that project is complete. And so we provide traffic control and roadway improvements for the tie-in once the railroad completes their project. And then we will also pay an additional amount of money. This one is estimated at $4,809 to complete the project. But this is a great fund, or a great project, a great program that the state has that we participate in.
Any questions?
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion in a second.
I'd like to comment, Madam Chair. I really think these are great projects because some of the railroad crossings back in the day were just absolutely horrible. Going off the Renner Crooks exit, that one down in the bottom there, it couldn't be fixed for, I don't know how long. And it was a car wrecker.
Yep, it was. There are great safety projects all the way around, so. All right, so we had a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Takes us, item 18, legislative update. Craig, I know you've been working hard until late last night on this report, so I appreciate you being here today.
You're welcome. Craig Dewey, Commission Office. Latest legislative update should basically define the total universe of bills that the commission is going to be looking at and the legislature will be considering, with the exception of about 45 bills that are vehicles. They're essentially carcasses that are waiting for legislative language to be inserted into the bill. A few bills that I did want to highlight for you. One is Senate Bill 19, repealing presumptive probation. The South Dakota Association of County Commissioners recently decided to support that bill. So that, just wanted to make you aware of that. Next bill, we're still waiting for Senate Bill 106, the local option bed, board, and booze tax, to receive a specific committee hearing date. It has been assigned a Senate tax, and we'll certainly be in communication with you once that gets scheduled. And then there are a couple of bills that would change the window for signatures for referring any action by a local governmental entity, as well as publishing requirements. The current state law indicates that 20 days are required for publishing notice, as well as citizens would have 20 days to collect signatures to refer something to an election ballot. Senate Bill 170 and House Bill 1115 would increase from 20 days to 35 days. There's a concern from our Planning and Zoning Director, Scott Anderson, about delays that could result in some development that has been approved by local governmental entities, particularly when it would get to close to the end of the calendar year once a rezoning ordinance would be approved. There are requirements to pull the permits in a timely manner. And Scott's concerned about, like I said, the end-of-the-year issues in regards to that. And there is a companion, a House bill. So the House bill ended up having the same language as the Senate bill. The House bill was killed in committee 10 to 3. So we'll see how the Senate discussion goes. They're taking a couple runs at it. Then last week, we also discussed House Bill 1160. That was in response to the pipeline construction and the emergency levy needing to be met to qualify for disaster funding. Right now, the current level's at 2 mils. This bill would lower it to .5 mils for receiving state aid. And last week, you all asked what the dollar amount would be for 2 mils for the county. Upon doing some additional research, the amount that the commission office had obtained was $28 million. So significant dollar amount that could result in savings for Minnehaha County should that unfortunate scenario arise. And then the last bill that I did want to highlight and get commission input on is a House Bill 1061. And the subject is providing a court order to test for HIV at the request of victims of certain crimes. That is being brought forward by Representative Tim Reed from Brookings, very similar to a bill in regards to requiring the county to pay for certain medical tests, or aspects of medical tests, that went through last year. I know the commission has had ongoing discussion amongst yourselves regarding how best to approach that subject from last year. So I did want to bring this bill and put it on your radar. Would be interested in your input if you decided you wanted to take a position on this specific bill or not.
Commissioner Heiburger, sorry.
I just have a question. That was why I was trying to pull it up on my phone, because I didn't know if you'd highlight it, House Bill 1061. Just a concern, again, that they are looking at one more thing to throw on counties without any funding. And I would, I think I would like to start with requesting a fiscal note. I know that they don't normally do that for counties, but we have had that conversation in the past that they should be required to have a fiscal note on what the probable expense would be towards counties. I don't think it's fair that they continue to pass down expenses to the counties with us having no repercussions. And so that would be, to me, a starting point as to what this would cost, because it's not fair that they continue to pass these costs to us.
Any other comments? It's hard to disagree with that.
As a follow-up to that comment, I know that that has been discussed in the past about certain bills, starting last summer. And it is challenging for the LRC to pull a fiscal note for what the cost would be for specific counties. The LRC can pull information for what cost would be for the state, because the LRC has access to state data networks. The LRC does not have access to county data networks and the 66 different auditors that would be able to catalog those costs.
But could they pull for what it would cost the state if the state paid for all of them? Because then those costs are going to be sent on to the counties, so.
That could be a creative solution in terms of trying to approach it.
What does this cost? Because you know that the majority of this cost is probably going to come to Minnehaha County and Pennington County, since we have the highest population. And so if they would just pull what the state numbers would cost, then they can figure it out, at least a ballpark idea.
This bill did get dropped and have a committee hearing scheduled quickly. As it turns out, the committee hearing on this bill is scheduled for tomorrow. State only requires, like other public entities, 24 hours' notice. So I will work on getting that information quickly. Any other comments, though, on this bill as far as any direction that the commission would like to provide?
I think my only concern would be that I don't think that the counties need to be responsible for the payment. That would be my only comment.
All right, I'll thank you for that comment. Any other questions regarding the legislative update as a whole?
And just to piggyback on that last comment, I think it would be useful or helpful, possibly, just to remind them that last year, a bill was passed that indicated it wasn't going to have a significant impact, and it has had, you know, maybe an unforeseen financial impact on the counties without a lot of vetting of that particular issue. So this is kind of, as you pointed out, the second year in a row that the same kind of issue is coming forward.
Thank you.
All right. So that takes us to liaison reports. Are there any liaison reports this week? Commissioner Barth.
I'd just say that two of the items from our last Planning and Zoning meeting have been appealed to the county. One is a hog cafo southwest of Hartford, and the other is a gravel pit expansion over on the west side also.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Heiburger.
I have one, too. Mine is actually good news. So the State's Attorney's Office was awarded $9,287.94 for electronic discovery hardware. These funds came from the forfeiture fund or the assets that were seized during drug-related issues. And this money needs to be used for drug apprehension purposes. And so that money was awarded to Aaron's office, and they will be using it, as I said, for discovery hardware. If it belongs to the state, so when we get to the point that we're going to get rid of it, no longer use it, or sell it, that those, that hardware will go back to the state. But a nice gift for the State's Attorney's Office.
Absolutely. Well-needed. Any other liaison reports? If not, that takes us to new business. Any new business? Hearing none. Any old business? All right, we have no executive committee or meeting today, so I entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second. Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, everyone. Stay warm.